So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spata, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the February 6th, 4th, sorry, February 4th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting to Order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom and by the Needham Channel, and it's being recorded for publication, later viewing, and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Adam Block?
President.
Artie Crocker?
President.
Justin McCollin?
President.
And Paul Alpert is not here yet, but we're anticipating that he will be joining us. Lee Newman and Alex Clear here tonight. So, our agenda tonight, we have five items. The first is the decision to the amendment to Major Project Site Plan Permit Number 1997-08, 63 Kendrick Street regarding requests to make certain revisions to the site and building. Number two is the May Special Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendment from the National Flood Insurance Program. And Lee will give us a presentation on that and get us up to date. The third is meeting minutes. The fourth is report from Planning Board and Board Members, and the fifth is correspondence. And while we were here, Lee Newman gave us an email that was sent today at 4:46 from...
No, I think it was sent this morning. It was sent this morning, about 3:06 this afternoon.
3:06, and it's regarding Needham Gateway Public Health requirements. So, we can talk about that later. So, Lee, you had shared with us the decision?
Yes, it's a draft decision. It's written for five of you to approve it, but we can always change that.
Okay, so that's for 63 Kendrick.
Right.
So, does anyone have any... Do we need to have a motion to discuss? No, we just basically go through each Planning Board member, right?
Well, we can. Was there a comment about the decision?
I think there were a couple minor tweaks that I made that were in the red line that I emailed out to you.
Correct. Those are incorporated into this?
Which are now incorporated in the first one that was in your packet.
What were the comments by their attorney on the decision?
I incorporated, I think, all of them except for two. He wanted to get rid of the provision for a construction management plan. I didn't agree to do that. And that was really the only change that...
You did or did not agree?
I did not agree to do that, and he was okay with that in the end. Otherwise...
Otherwise, there are minor things like she forgot to put the percentage. It says 25, but it didn't have percent.
There, yes. George, they've looked at... They've looked, he's reviewed the decision, and his comments are incorporated.
He's here if you want to ask him.
I don't necessarily see a need, but I am...
Well, he probably should be right over if he wants to.
I am curious. I remember, Natasha, you advocated for a construction management plan on a decision years ago. I can't even remember what decision it was. And I remember briefly having a conversation, but I don't remember the answer. What's the standard when we would require a construction management plan?
It's when the building inspector requires it. So, I have a condition in here that requires that they satisfy the building department relative to submittal of a construction management plan. How the site's going to be managed during construction, when they're refacing the building. And so, that's done through the building inspector's office.
So, does the building inspector then determine that based on the scope of renovation or the scope of addition? Like, for instance, if it's a minor, if it's 5,000 square feet or less?
Well, in this case, they're refacing the entire exterior thing.
So, in this case, they need it, but maybe we should look and see so that we know when it is that we need it and make sure that we have it in the decisions.
Well, I have it in the decision.
No, no, for this one, we need it, but just that you're asking, when do we need it?
So, I don't know. I don't know if any of us know. It would be good to know, you know, I think these elements of what we're requiring in our decisions and what purpose, you know, what purpose they serve. I think, you know...
Generally, when they're doing site construction, there's a construction management plan. When they're doing work outside the building in the parking lot, refacing the building, putting an addition on a building, there's generally a construction management plan that comes in. If it's interior to the building, maybe not.
And what does that plan tell them to do? What are they telling us that they will do?
That plan will say how they're going to be doing the work. And then, not only that, if they face things, it also says how they contain the water on the site. It says a lot of different pieces. That's part of their specs. But I don't think that we have... I think that's the building department. I don't think it's our purview. We just need to make sure that it's in there. Is that correct?
We basically say that before a building permit is issued, that they need to satisfy the building department and submit a construction management plan.
Right.
So, that is kind of our...
So, we don't review that because that's means and methods. That's for the building department to review.
We basically say that before they get the building permit, they have to submit a construction management plan. It's got to be approved by the building commissioner and the police chief.
Does it also talk about their mobilization plan?
Probably, but that's not... I don't think that's in our purview. That's in the building department's purview. They have to be... The building department has to be content.
Except for making it a regulation. So, it is effectively in our purview, right?
No, because basically what we're saying is that that has to be submitted and approved by the building department. So, it's by, like, engineering. Like, it's a... But we don't tell them how they build.
Or you need to get a water permit. We're not issuing those.
We're not issuing them and we're not reviewing them.
I understand. I just am curious what the, you know, if there's a standard of review, when that would be required or not required or when it would be discretionary, if discretionary. That's all. I don't think any of us know, and I think it would be helpful to know that along the building commissioner.
No, I know. I know, yeah. I mean, every time we do a project, the contractor has to provide it to the building department. The building department approves it. It just says, you have to make sure that that's done before, like the Board of Health. Like, we don't go around looking at the Board of Health stuff.
Regulations, they have to decide.
Regulations, they decide for us in this particular case. Yeah, yeah. Because it's means and methods of construction. It's not a final, what's finally going to be put in the building.
If you wanted me to reach out to Joe and ask him the threshold under which he requires it, I can get that information.
Well, I mean, if we say it's required by the building department, construction management plan is required by the building department.
The building department reviews it.
And then, they say, okay, they require something that is what you require, or he does not like what's required. Is that sort of the same purpose?
In this case, I'm saying it's required because they're doing exterior work, and it's generally when Joe wants it, so...
But we can get that information too just to make sure that Joe, whatever, you know, Joe says, yeah, I review it and then...
I just want to understand, because I don't think many of us do, the rationale behind some of our decision points.
Okay. That's fair.
That was one of the sessions from the training, you know, what goes in a, you know, what goes in a Planning Board decision.
Well, that's true.
Sorry, but I appreciate your indulgence. Sorry.
Yeah, no, but we can look into it and we can...
That's all.
It would be good to have a checklist because usually when I ask Lee, like, okay, did public health, you know, or whoever it is, review it? Yes, do they have any comments? Does the building department have any comment? So, it's just good to know what the list is to make sure that we know what's in our purview for what type of project.
Thank you.
Okay.
And George is president now.
George is president, and Paul has joined us also. So, Paul, we're just reviewing the decision. There were some minor tweaks that...
I saw them.
And so, do you have any comments?
Nope. I'm fine.
Do you have any comments already? And then, Adam?
No. I do not.
No? Okay. So, with that, do...
I want to ask George, just to confirm that George is okay.
George, do you have any comments?
No. I'm fine with the decision as revised. Yeah, the construction management plan, just to kind of, I'll just comment quickly on that. In my experience, on all the projects that I've been involved with, I think only one did the building department actually require a formal plan, and it was one where almost the entirety of the site was being developed or redeveloped. And so, there was a question about where materials were going to be stored and staged, where contractors were going to park, and so on. And so, they require, so the building department required it on that one. I don't know that the building department always requires a formal written plan. If the site is such that sort of common sense would indicate there's plenty of room to store materials and park vehicles and so on, but certainly on smaller sites where you're going to have off-site sort of overspill, then it becomes much more of a thing. And as I said, that's the only one I know of where they actually required a written submittal to actually put it in writing as to how they're going to be handled and managed.
Thank you, George. That's helpful.
So, then, Lee, we'll just get that from him, like, when those are required and when they aren't.
Right.
I don't mean to open a Pandora's box.
No, it's good. It's good, though. Okay, so with that, do you have the information that you need?
So, yes, I think the board just needs to... If you don't have any changes you want to make on the decision, then I think I need a motion for you to grant the relief, and then I need a motion for you to actually accept the decision as your decision.
Okay, so will someone make a motion?
I make a motion to grant relief for the amendment to the major site. Is that a relief to the amendment? It's a major site plan?
I think you probably want to read...
The whole paragraph?
The whole paragraph, right.
Whole paragraph at the beginning?
No, no, no. Go to the decision.
Decision right there.
Yeah, keep going. Keep going, keep going.
Top of page eight.
I'm sorry that I didn't bring my laptop tonight.
No, but this is good.
Keep going, keep going. There we go.
That one right there.
The top paragraph there.
Okay, so...
Start with number one.
Okay, so, make a motion to approve, therefore, the board voted 5-0 to grant, one, the requested special permit under Section 1.4.6 of the zoning bylaw for the change, extension, and alteration of pre-existing non-conforming use of building under zoning bylaw. Three, the requested special permit under Section 8.4.3 of the zoning bylaw to waive the...
Should have been two.
Yeah, I think that's a correction.
What's this supposed to be? 8.4.2?
Should be two.
Two? It looks like three.
Don't worry about it. Okay, we'll fix it.
4.8.3 of the zoning bylaw to waive the requirements of Section 4.8.1, ensuring the setback of surface parking from the intersection of the exterior street lines of a corner lot up to a maximum percentage of 25%. And three, the request a major project site plan review, special permit amendment under Section 7.4 of the bylaw and Section 4.2 of major project site plan review, special permit number 1997-08, dated August 5, 1997, amended March 17, 1998, and December 19, 2006, subject to and with the benefit of the following plan modifications, conditions, and limitations.
Seconded. Who seconded?
Paul.
Paul. So, Artie made the motion, Paul seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. So, it's unanimous. The motion is carried.
Before we take a motion to approve a decision as written, I think in that paragraph, the first number three should be number two.
Yeah, we got that. Thank you.
4.8.2.
No, no, no.
No, it's just the listing numbers. We got it.
Oh, yeah, that should have been two, not three. Yeah, that should have been two.
Madam Chair, I move adoption of the decision as drafted and further amended this evening.
Seconded. Justin's going to get beat out. So, Adam made the motion, Artie seconded, Justin thirded, and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, so the motion carries, and thank you, George.
Thank you all.
Good luck with the project. So, okay, so moving forward to the second agenda items, a May Special Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Amendment for the National Flood Insurance Program. So, Lee, I know you have a little presentation, right?
Just to speak to you.
Or you'll speak to us.
I'll just speak to you. I'm not going to do a PowerPoint presentation on this. So, essentially, I just want to let you, make you aware. We got a letter, the town got a letter from Federal Emergency Management Agency. They have reissued basically the floodplain maps for Needham. They were last issued in 2012. So, when they do the study and they reevaluate the flood elevations along the river and where flooding is actually happening under the 100-year storm and the 500-year storm, they issue a set of maps. The town earlier, I think, received those maps and didn't ask for any variations on those maps. And so, in order to make sure that we're still compliant, people can still get federal flood insurance, we're required to do legislatively two things in terms of what they've required for us. We have to basically vote. The town has to basically vote to amend the zoning, to recognize these new maps, which now become the floodplain district in Needham. And they've had some additional regulatory changes that they're going to require too that need to be made to how we actually regulate the floodplains. So, we just received this. I just received this notice that we're going to actually be doing this. This has to be done by July of this year. So, I'm working with town council and the town engineer to develop the two zoning articles that will have to go forward to implement this. So, first, the first article will be to amend the current section we have in our floodplain district to reflect the new requirements that the federal government is putting on Needham. The second change will be a map change to basically revise the boundaries of our floodplain district to reflect the new FEMA maps. So...
Have there been changes?
Yes, there have been some changes. There have, there have been, from 2012, engineering is telling me they're pretty minor. There are some instances where it's a little smaller. There's some instances where it's a little larger. They've grabbed a couple of the ponds in Needham and put them into the district. So, for you, engineering is preparing a map which will show the boundaries for the 2012 floodplain. And the boundaries for now this new district is basically reflected on the 23 maps. So, you can actually physically see the differences, where they're located, so how many acres were in the floodplain, for example, in 2012, how many acres are in the floodplain now under the 23 maps, and how it's actually changing in different parts of town. So, they're preparing those maps, and I'll have them for the next Planning Board meeting along with basically the map change article. And Chris Heap and I are working now with FEMA to make the regulatory changes that will have to happen to the text to be compliant. And FEMA has agreed, they have a liaison to review our draft changes just to confirm that we've caught everything and there aren't going to be any problems.
So, what's the timeline to town meeting with this?
The town line for this is it's going to have to happen in a special town meeting. We can't do it in the annual. So, and the timeline is essentially that really at your next Planning Board meeting, you're going to need to vote the zoning to refer it to the select board to start the hearing process. And that will be two articles. It will be the changes, you know, you'll have a red line. You'll have the changes that are required that are required to the text, and then the changes for the map change. And you'll have a map to at least inform you so you'll know conceptually what is changing and where it's changing and to start that process.
But that's what we're going to find out next, choose next... Sorry, the next meeting, right?
So, the next meeting, I'll have the two articles for you. And we'll have the map, we'll show the changes.
FEMA has to approve the changes?
Pardon me?
Did you say that FEMA has to approve the changes?
FEMA has, FEMA basically has to sign off on what we do in the end.
Before or after we voted?
After. Well, and they do it after, but they coordinate with us before and while we're drafting it to make sure we don't have any, there aren't any oversights. We've reached out to them to coordinate with them to make sure that there are no oversights. That's how we did it basically in 2012. We gave them drafts of our zoning.
What if President Trump fires half of their workforce?
There's a possibility.
What if President Trump dissolves FEMA, which he has threatened to do? Do these regulations just disappear or FEMA disappears?
I don't know. There are laws out there, Paul, and they seem to be ignored.
Yes, they seem to be ignoring laws.
So, who might know what law is going to be ignored? Pardon me?
To Paul's point, can you ask town council to inform us what happens if we do go through this process and town meeting adopts it and midway or afterwards, Trump subsequently disbands FEMA?
It's going to be the same thing.
But it's still going to be the same thing because you're still going to have the same floodplain.
Yeah, for everyone in the United States that's in a floodplain zone, they will be in the same, they will be in the same position that if we go through and do the change, it's going to be everywhere. And the National Flood Insurance Plan is actually funded through Congress, which there's that delineation between Congress and the executive branch. FEMA, obviously, being the executive branch is the administrator of those congressional funds. But nonetheless, yeah, I think it's fueled to not go through this process because we believe that it's going to be defunded.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm not saying don't go through it. I just think Paul raises a valid question.
We don't know, but we need to be prepared.
But it's going to be everyone's problem.
I mean, it's required by, it's required by law that we do it. So, if Trump decides to ignore the law...
It's required by FEMA that we do it, okay? And they're saying that they need to review it, and you're telling me that they're going to review it before we submit it to town meeting, but we don't have that kind of a timeline.
But I believe it's not FEMA and it's MIMA because people don't deal directly with FEMA. It actually goes through...
Well, the letter came from FEMA.
But there's the DCR Flood Hazards Management Program Office is the one that's made this PowerPoint that's in here.
Right.
All of these email addresses are MIMA's email addresses.
So, but I heard Lee say that it's FEMA.
Well, no, I think it's, I showed...
So, it's, as you know, it's multi-layered.
If it's going to be reviewed by MIMA, then I have a problem. MIMA's not going away. MIMA's not going to have a workforce where, you know, half the workforce is going to say, fine, I'm retired. You know, pay me until September. I'm not showing up anymore.
So, FEMA, my understanding, FEMA doesn't deal directly with municipalities. They deal through the states. That's the way it's set up. It's like, fine, a job.
Then MIMA will look at it and they'll get back to us. I have full confidence.
There's, they set the legislation. Congress sets the funding. FEMA sets, you know, what they do. Each state has their own emergency management agency that then takes that information and pushes that through the regions. Each region, we're in region three. Then, we have a regional coordinator that works with all of that, whether that's preparedness, whether that's flood management, whether that's recovery...
Why do you know all?
Because I'm a certified emergency manager, and I do emergency management for my job.
That's his job, man.
That's my...
But I do want to say...
It's his job.
Yeah, no, that's good. But I do want to say that no matter what, if those are the new floodplains, we should have a map that has the new floodplains, right? So, we should, we should know what they are anyway.
Yes, regardless.
Regardless of if they need us to do it or not, we should update our plans to be wherever the flood...
And this is the delineation for whether people are required to or should have flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program, yeah.
We also need that information if we're looking at stormwater management in town and all that stuff. We need to know where all the delineations are.
I was more, I was more questioning...
Yeah, yeah, DCR is the only one.
Not the floodplain map, but the regulations that they want us to adopt.
So, she said she's dealing with DCR. So, it is, it's going to be DCR. It's going to be MIMA. It's all state level. So, they're the ones that administrate.
It's a good point, though.
Oh, yeah.
We're in flux.
They're doing, they're basically doing, They're doing, they're doing, they're, they're basically doing, they're going to assist us in reviewing our draft to make sure we have covered everything and it's done appropriately.
But there's a whole PowerPoint here of those, anyone who's interested regarding variances and all of those things. But it would be interesting to see what has changed and what's, what it's impacting.
Yes, they're mapping that for us, so, the difference between the, the two lines. I've heard that that's not significant. I mean, there's some places where it's a half a foot higher and some places where it's a half a foot lower.
But there are a lot of, it seems like there are a lot of changes in the written text.
The written text, we actually made a lot of the changes we made in 2012. So that's, it's part of that inventory that they have in that PowerPoint includes changes that got made in 2012.
But there's a lot of red in the text that you sent and a lot of cross-outs.
Yeah, there's some things that have to be added, so that's what we're adding to the text.
When, Chris should look at that and let us know if that's cool.
We are, that's what we're doing. An extra job that we hadn't planned on doing.
So do you want to talk about the?
Okay, so. So what, what, what were you saying?
Well, we, the, in the packet is a schedule for town meeting to make this and it includes a special meeting. So I was just saying we should bring that to your attention because I don't know if we can do it without a special meeting. And a special meeting would be Thursday, March 27th.
This is a special meeting for what?
For the hearing for the zoning.
Public hearing.
Oh, for the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
What was that date, March?
27th. We're holding the hearings on Thursdays for the MBTA Communities one and this one because it gives us an extra week with when the paper comes out to meet the statutory notice requirements. So that's why.
Would you just agree? My wife is away that, that night, you said the 27th?
Yes.
So I'll be like a solo dad for that time, which is cool. But, oh, yeah, that's right.
Can that be a Zoom meeting or does it have to be an in-person meeting?
The meeting will be, I, I think the meeting should be, it should be a hybrid meeting and those, and most people should probably be present.
Right.
But Adam, certain member being away at Zoom.
So March 27th, that's fine, I, I, um.
What, can you remind me what this meeting is for again? Is this for the?
This is the public hearing for the floodplain zoning change.
Got it, okay.
And hope, and please don't add multiple items to the night, preferably.
And there's no way that we can do it on the 25th, which is a Tuesday?
No, because I think the legal notice, that's what Alex was trying to say, the legal notice is going to run on Thursday. So, I mean, we, I think she did it as, as fast as she could. So the planning board's going to, you meet on the 25th and you're going to finalize the language. And then the first time that hearing notice can run is the 7th.
The 7th of?
Oh, no, wait, no, wait, it goes, it goes.
I, I have the planning board meeting on the 18th.
Yeah, I had the, I don't have a planning board meeting on 25th.
Yeah, I have on the 23rd.
Yeah, you do. That's when I sent it to you. You mean, are we talking February?
We're talking March.
Oh, yes, you're right, in March, you're right.
It's February, February 25th, we have a planning board meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But we're talking March 27th for this meeting, correct?
Right.
But why can't we do March 25th?
Well, the soonest I can run the first ad is March 13th unless I ask the select board to have a special meeting.
So, so can we do it on the 18th or you're saying we can't do it on the 18th?
You can't do it any sooner than the 27th because of the legal notices. I think what she's saying is the select board meet on March 11th, which means the hearing notice can't run until after they meet.
So why can't we meet on April 1st? We already have a meeting on April 1st.
Well, we could accept, we could if we think that we're not going to, that would be the hearing. We have to get the final language to Miles one week later. So it's very unlikely that you're going to change the language. So I don't know if Lee's going to be comfortable with it. I, I think it's possible because I don't think you're going to be making all these crazy changes to this language.
Justin, are you going to make any changes?
Yeah, Justin, you're the one that knows the most about this, so.
I, I have to see the maps. No, I don't know.
Well, you can't change the maps.
We only, it's only a week, so it's just, it's really tight. You would have to, you would have to have your discussion after the hearing at the same meeting and make any decisions. I mean, usually we like to give you guys time to digest the hearing before you deliberate, so I don't know.
Well, we can be, you can send us, we'll obviously have the text before that meeting that we can all read through. That we can all read through.
Much before because you're voting it.
You can be voting in February.
Yeah.
I'm not expecting that we're going to have people showing up. But if people show up, if people have, you know, if, if there are people who are as knowledgeable as Justin and they come in and they suggest changes.
You're going to have a town agent here that night, too.
Right, but I mean, you have a week to make changes from.
Yeah, but we have to then have a meeting to discuss the changes. If we do it on April 1st, we're going to have other, that's a regularly scheduled meeting. We're going to have other items on the agenda. So if we just do it on the 27th, we have the hearing. And if there are no substantial changes, then we vote it and we send it to Miles. But if it's on April 1st and there are changes, we have to discuss those changes that night in addition to our other agenda items.
Okay.
I think, I think it's too tight to do it.
I think we should do it on the 27th.
Okay, so can we tentatively put the 27th? I just have to double check if I can make it, but.
I mean, I'll have to Zoom if I do, if, if, um, yeah, I, I can, I'll figure it out.
If you could.
Okay.
There's two, two Zoomers.
That's the only day that we can do it, on the 27th.
Well, or.
I just have to double check.
Well, you know.
Besides April 1st, which we're saying it's not a good idea.
The select board is meeting on the 25th of February as well.
Yeah, but they're going to see the zoning for the first time ever. What if they change something? I mean.
This board, what if this board changes something, yeah.
Does the, does a select board ever change anything the first time around?
No, but what happens when we do it that way, I, I'm, I'm comfortable, I send Kate the zoning ahead of time. So she's going to vote it the same night you're going to vote it. You've seen it before, so this time you're going to see it for the first time. I mean, you're, you're going to be.
We're going to see it on the 17th, right?
You're going to see it on February 25th, which is your next meeting. And that's when they meet?
That's when they meet. You're seeing it for the first time, which means she's voting what you, what came in your packet, you haven't even done anything like that.
So on the, on February 25th, we have to vote to send it to the select board. Because of that procedure where the select board then has to send it back to us. So they're sitting in meeting, we vote to, to, to send it to the select board. You send a text to Kate saying the vote's been made. So then they take a vote to send it back to us.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah, and we've done that before.
Yeah.
Except that this time you won't have had the benefit of already seeing the language. So it just feels like if you make any tweaks, we can't be texting that over to Kate, so.
I'm not going to make any tweaks because I have no idea what these regulations say. I took a look at, I took a look at the package and I said, I'm going to trust Chris Heap to do what's right here because I have no idea what they're saying. But now I'm revising that and saying I'm trusting Chris Heap and Justin.
And our engineering department.
And the, well, the engineering department is going to be working with Chris Heap. You know, we're going to get that. So I am going to be trusting the engineering department and Chris Heap and Justin. That if, you know, Chris Heap drafts something and Justin sees it and says, I want to make some minor changes, I'm comfortable with that. But hopefully that will be done before February 25th. So that, you know, we'll just have it with Justin's comments in time to send it to the select board on the 25th and have them then send it back to us that night.
When is the chance that we get it?
I don't know. I'm, I'm having a meeting tomorrow on it, you know.
We've got three weeks.
The state's supposed to give us some preliminary comments this week. He said he's hoping, hoping to give us some preliminary comments and I don't, you know, I can't control them.
School vacation week.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why we're not meeting on the 20th.
Right. I think we're, we're just going to check, you guys are going to check into some things about March 27th and report back.
Yes, but if you do, if you do get the stuff, I'm, I'm, I'm skiing the 17th to 21st. But I'm, I'm back home on that weekend so I could review it over the weekend, the 22nd and the 23rd of February. And provide feedback to the board or to you. And then you can.
Yeah, but that's really too late because Kate's doing her agenda, you know, the week before. You know, I mean, the, the agenda packets are all being done.
Yeah, no, the packets, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. I'm, I'll, I'll let you know about the 27th.
Okay, okay. And if, and if folks can't do it, we will.
We'll schedule for April 1st.
Creative, yeah, we'll, yeah, exactly, we'll just have to.
We'll just have to do it April 1st and we'll be here until then. If there, if there are changes to be discussed.
Yeah, 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 I think you're right, that's the plan B.
My feeling is it's just going to be transactional, it's just not.
That's my.
Yeah.
Okay, so, moving on, we have meeting minutes, which I didn't see any meeting minutes in there.
That's correct.
Are there any meeting minutes? Okay, so the next thing is report from planning board and board members. So let's go.
Has there been any early meetings? No, nothing.
Nothing, so anything going on with the, with, with your meetings with, with the town manager?
No, not yet. We, we have a meeting, we have a meeting scheduled to discuss the, to discuss the resumes. On Monday, February 24th, which is the day before our next meeting. So, you know, we haven't even seen the resumes yet. We'll be seeing the resumes during, during school vacation week. We'll be seeing the resumes. So then we all get together on Monday, the 24th at 6:30 to review the resumes and decide who we want to interview. And then right now.
So it's on, that's on target for?
It's on target. And so right now they're trying to figure out through, through a doodle thing when we can all get together to have, to have interviews. I believe, my recollection from the select board meeting is that our hired expert wants to, wants us to narrow the resumes down to like five or six to interview. Hopefully have the interviews on the same day. And then, I don't know whether we'll discuss them right away or, you know, have another meeting like a day or two later and send it to the, to the select board and then we're out of it.
Okay, great. So Artie, I'll come back to you because you probably have a lot to say.
But the large house review, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Not necessarily a lot, I mean, there's definitely, definitely something to talk about. I mean, come back if you want, but.
Yeah, let's just figure out if we, and then, because I figured that that's probably going to take more time, right? Both of you to give us some feedback. Okay, Justin?
Mobility, we, there really isn't that much. There was one meeting, but it was more of just getting current statuses of the Highland app project and wasn't really even too much exchanged.
Okay, great. Adam?
On the Council of Economic Advisers, there had, there's no forthcoming zoning, change of, of anything. Heidi is kind of, the new chair is devising a new program for the council, so there's no substantive update. On the concert, on the, keeping for instance, the Christmas committee, the community preservation committee. The Needham Housing Authority is looking to raise some funding for a study for high rock estates. And, um, that, so that's one question, whether or not it can be funded. But the other question is, if it is, they probably will want to come to the planning board for a significant zoning change. To be able to increase the number of units and the type of development. But that's years away. And they're also looking for some funding for Cook and Seabeds. And then separately, the Charles River Center is looking to redevelop the area of Militia Heights. Which would be a phenomenal opportunity and a great community asset. But I'm not clear if, and I had a question for you, if, are you familiar with your plan?
They're coming in to meet with us, was it tomorrow or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
So if you could let me know after that meeting, in your opinion, whether they would require, you know, a zoning change or if they, how they intend to go through it?
I think they're going to do a 40B.
Okay. A friendly 40B, obviously.
So the Charles River Center owns that land.
That's my understanding. I, I, I'll have the details after I sit down with them.
So the army must convey it to the.
That's right.
Yeah, I thought they wanted.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's closed or not. I think it did, but I don't, I don't recall, but I, or when it did close, but that's interesting, that's good to know, Lee. Because that'll affect, I think that, you know, the process with the CPC and so on.
Yeah, if you would think of us any documents, I'll save them and forward them on.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Do you have more specific information about what they plan?
They'll, they'll present to Lee, I think, their more specific plan. They did, I just, I, I don't have all the details of it right now. I'm just trying to get my blood sugar back.
But it's residential?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, interesting.
You know, when you're saying a 40B, I'm like, they're talking, at some point they're talking about just housing for their clients they serve. And I don't know, and I don't know what they're talking about with the 40, with the 40 situation.
They're not going to do, it's for, it's for their community. It's not like they're going to open up a separate apartment building for.
Yeah, then that wouldn't be a part of the 40B.
Well, let's see what they come up with.
Yeah, that's interesting, though. Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're meeting with them informally and then we're, we're actually scheduling them informally in front of you at some point after that.
So is it?
No, I don't think so.
Am I hearing rumors that they're rethinking what they want to do for the Muzzy site?
That's, that's what they're, yeah, that's what it sounds like they want to do. So they, they called up Lee, looks like they want to set up a chairs meeting at some point, hopefully soon and start getting a little bit more information about it than whatever pathway we take from there. Whenever they want to take a.
They weren't ready to actually, you know, formally go come in and, and speak at a chair, vice chair meeting or at a board meeting.
Yeah, at some point.
But I think, you know, it sounds like there's something gurgling and they're just.
There's something gurgling, but they still haven't quite figured out what they want to do.
Yeah. So, but I think that's going to probably be coming.
Yeah, it would be nice to have, to have somebody break ground, something there rather than just having.
But they have to carry that site, I mean, that's a lot of money spent on that site for it to just sit there, too.
They were just initially feeling out how would the community receive a change and what type of change. So, but they know we want to receive something.
Yeah, I think they're looking, you know, at housing as perhaps an option and maybe mixed use, some, some medical office space, maybe some retail in conjunction with housing.
I don't think lab is going to make it anywhere.
Isn't the zoning that we passed, that we already passed a law for all that?
Yeah.
It does, but I don't know that.
For a limited degree.
They, to, to a limited degree, they may need greater density in term, in terms of the total number of units they could actually put on the property. Because we had limited it, I think, to around 250 units is what my memory is.
Yeah, that was what it was.
Yeah, more than a half mile from the T station, or something.
Yes, it wouldn't count, it doesn't come under the MBTA Community Act.
Well, let's see what they come up with also. So it sounds like there's a lot of stuff gurgling.
That'll be interesting.
Which is good for the economy.
Yeah, no, that'll, that'll be very.
It'd be good for the economy to get something built there.
To get something built there. Okay, Artie, so large house.
Okay, large house review. We had another meeting last night, primarily what's happening last night, there is a working group that pulled off maybe five people from the group. Their, their job was to look at the non-conforming lots, so lots under 10,000 square feet. And to look at what houses have been built over the past, what, three years, I believe is one of these past three years. And so they, and so Lee and Alex, they pulled together all the data as far as what units have been torn down to be built. But that didn't, but that they couldn't, they couldn't segment out the non-conforming from conforming until they pulled everything down, I believe. Then you went through, then you went through each one to see which one, the acreage of each lot, correct?
We, yeah, we just pulled the non-conformings to start. And so it was non-conforming relative to lot size, non-conforming relative to frontage, gave them an inventory of everything that had happened in the last three years. Um, the group chose, I think, 11 houses to look at in detail, you know, looking at bearing sizes of the houses. And we put together a spreadsheet which allowed them to look at how that, you know, what basically was being built there in terms of number of bedrooms, what the FAR was, what the lot coverage was. And then to, to look at what happens if you change the definition of FAR so as to, for example, include the basement and the attic, just include the attic. And how, how do those houses pass when you actually began to measure FAR in a different way? And in most cases, of course, they, they failed. But there were a couple of cases where they were successful, but in most, in most cases, the houses are just being built out to the maximum FAR that you can get.
Yeah, it was interesting, it was interesting. One of the houses, I think, failed period, even at the first and second. And one of the houses was substantially less than the FAR. So there were 11, they pulled 11 houses out. And so one seemed to fail period, one was easily passed and substantially under. Then the other nine were just right at, right at that threshold, right to the threshold of FAR.
The existing definition of FAR?
Existing definition of FAR. Then, 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 then the spreadsheet setup could be played, played, changing the definition of FAR or changing what's counted in the FAR and how does that pass fail.
And also calculate or include the cost of the, what amount to the dirt value? I thought I saw that on the spreadsheet.
There was, um.
And the sale price.
Well, there was, it was, it was, I think it was off the MSL listing. We, we, we were, they were, we were curious about how they were representing this total square footage and how that actually relates to the building plans we were looking at. And then basically, I think it was also what the houses had actually sold for.
And for, and for the houses, it appeared as though potentially they, they were rebuilt by the owners of the property. There's, there was no selling, reselling going on, it was just a rebuild. So again, potentially.
People are buying houses to then, to the land, basically.
Yeah, potentially the owners.
Versus having a developer and not get down.
Yeah, and who knows how long they lived there at that point. I'm not sure if we have the data when it was last sold.
So I'd be, I'd be curious, you know, I hope the committee is making that statement that they've reviewed the deed and to see if, you know, if those deeds are held by an LLC or by, you know, individuals. And that the individuals are the same individuals that had lived in it otherwise, if that's what you're saying, just to validate that statement. But I also thought that I saw the, you know, the, what the dirt value was when the house was acquired and the data was initially acquired. And then it went on market and what it sold for. And I think that when you're doing that and you're talking about Artie as well having an understanding of the fiscal impact. If, you know, these properties obviously fail when you reduce FAR based on a more restrictive definition of FAR. You know, what would be said of the purchase price when it was sold as a dirt value?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're definitely aware of, there's definitely a conversation going on and being aware of that's something we have to take, take into consideration. And to what degree we have to take into consideration as well.
Question taken. Are we looking at perhaps from, for the fiscal impact analysis to, to bring in a consultant?
I think we might be doing that, I think.
Because I don't know the expertise can, for what we want to.
I think at some point when we're ready, we're talking.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Then doing something, yes. I think we're talking about that, yeah.
To the town, to the homeowner and then.
We have to look at the conforming lots as well. And we still have to, we still have to figure out, you know, what change we even want to make. So what we're going to do is we have the 11 houses. And so all of us have, all of us on the larger committee are going to take a look at those houses and going to, I guess I'll use some, some criteria for judging what we think, what we feel. Because initially that's what it's based on. What do we think, what do we feel, how's it fit in type of thing? So we're going to take a look at them and then come back and give us, give some assessment. Because eventually we're going to have to have, if we're going to make a change, we have to start somewhere. You know, we started with figuring out where they fit into the current by lot FAR requirement. And then if we're going to make a change, what impact does it have and how much, and how much change we want to make? And, and it's going to be based on, at some point, is it fitting in? And then we're going to have to decide, well, okay, if, if the, you know, are we going to, are we going to make a change that affects everything, blanket everything in, in non-conforming? Or we're going to have some way to have a flexibility of change within the non-conforming?
We don't, we don't know that yet.
But I think in order, when you assess the impact, I think, impact, fiscal impact is, is, so I, I would even say that starting to engage, you know, I know get, trying to get a consultant on board is, is going to, is a, is a process that, especially if you're, you're trying to do something for, for next year, I think we need to.
For October.
Or for October, then you need to start engaging a consultant sooner. Just so that will give you a tool so that when you do your, when you're gauging your impact, you then can have fiscal impact as one of those variables that are part of the calculus to determine which is the best way.
So, so I, I think the, so the, that working group met again this afternoon. And I believe soon that working group is, we're going to be going into the conforming lots as well. I'm not sure if they remotely hit that this afternoon.
We didn't hit that this afternoon.
Okay, but we're, we're soon going into the conforming lots as well. So at some point.
So you're doing a huge analysis on non-conforming and conforming.
Non-conforming, so at some point we'll have.
To understand what's happening.
What the rules create, right.
Yeah, what the rules actually create and what's happening. I mean, like, we started out with a program, I think, in 20, when we did this, you know, assuming a four, four bedrooms and, you know, a certain program. And everything, of course, is speed built, it's way beyond that. Six bedrooms, five bedrooms, six bedrooms and multiple baths and the rooms are much larger. So the program is, you know, much bigger, I think, than what we thought the program was going to be at the time we did it earlier.
You mean 2014 or 17 or whatever?
And you've also looked at other towns, right, to see what their.
And we've also collected the data, it wasn't part of the package. We collected data from a number of different towns in terms of what their rules were. Interestingly, Concord actually has a district similar to Needham, it's 10,000 square foot lots, 80-foot frontages. And they basically have a floating, an FAR that grades, basically graduates. So it starts out with a base and then incrementally gets larger with lot size, so it's.
Ours is the opposite. Ours is the opposite. Ours is.
Ours is ours that's a straight percentage, right, that applies.
And then it reduces based on the gradual increase in lot size, lot size.
But Concord has really an interesting approach. So there's some thought about seeing whether or not that makes sense. And I think the graphs that actually Joe Matthews prepared kind of looked at that.
And then, I mean, one thing that would be interesting to consider at some point is, and that is, as we're changing some type of bylaw, do we do we make some change where if someone's putting an addition on to a house? And the house has been built for two years or longer or something like that, do we allow in addition to be put on that maybe breaks breaks the barrier, something like that? So to give someone an incentive to put an addition on versus tear the thing down and build up again. I mean, we haven't we haven't exactly had that conversation yet, but I think it's a conversation worth having.
Yeah, it's interesting. Adam, you have something?
Um, a couple of things. To Justin's point and more specifically, I think. Have you reached out to the FinCom?
No.
Uh.
Well, there's a representative.
There's no representative of FinCom on the large house review.
There is.
No, there is. There is.
I think there is.
I thought it was supposed to be.
Tina, right.
So I I think that I. Justin's right. You need to get the you need to engage that fiscal consultant now. And I think you're we have to start the process to, you know, to let FinCom know that we need, you know, we have promises for town meeting. We need uh that expertise to be able to help understand the fiscal impact.
We have money to pay for this, so we don't need.
For the consultant?
Yeah, remember, we had Mother Manic before last year.
Right, but I wasn't sure how much and what specifically that was for.
We made eighty thousand dollars.
We have money that we didn't use last year because we got a grant. She got a grant for the first.
Right, so I mean.
And 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 just.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Oh, sorry. Hold on, excuse me. Hold on, hold on.
Before I hold on one second, just before you continue, um, the other thing is Lee had put some money in for additional money and additional people to help. And and that wasn't granted or right, so.
We don't, you know, the town manager's recommendation.
What downed flips.
Came out.
There were there were.
I don't know what you're saying.
More dire needs.
She.
Downed flips.
She.
The budget we submitted for this year.
For an additional planner.
For an additional planner and for additional administrative support. She rejected.
She rejected it. Okay.
Right, there were other things that were more pressing.
So um. So I'm sorry, I'm just confused. Of the eighty thousand dollars, has has Sand Tech been awarded a contract to complete the parking study?
No, we haven't done anything with Sand Tech because we applied for a grant to pay for that.
And what happened?
The grant hasn't, they haven't even, they were supposed to make their decision um in the fall and they still haven't made a decision.
Okay. And can we use that part of that eighty thousand dollars to engage?
We could, but I didn't want to spend the eighty thousand if the state was going to give us money to pay for it.
Well, we also should have a clear scope of what it is that you're looking for to make sure.
We already we already know the parking.
No, no, for this, for this piece, for the fiscal, because based on, you know.
We need to we need to understand why we're employing somebody.
Yes.
Yeah.
To what purpose, yeah.
But but I guess what both of you are saying is that we should take that into account pretty quickly because of the process. But you you need to figure out how to determine what, how do you do you create a scope to be able to.
Yes, I know, and I'm not sure what that scope is yet, so.
Right, right.
Because I don't think the committee's smart enough along to know what that scope is.
Right.
Well, I think that I think the scope is pretty simple. It's to understand what the fiscal impact is to a homeowner of the value of their land effectively on the dirt on the dirt value.
Under a number of different scenarios with FARs being modified.
Yes, exactly. That's all. That's it. Doesn't have to be more complicated than that. Um, in terms of, in terms of some of the the goals to the thing, is affordability, housing affordability part of the impact or the goal of this?
Not really, no. No, no, we're not talking about that. I mean, we're we're just talking we're just talking about um neighbor neighborhood, the neighborhoods, what's happening in the neighborhoods. At some point, you know, we have, you know, how official it's going to be, but there's the the flooding resilience, the aspect of the builds and how they affect the neighborhoods is the flooding. Aspect is the trees, the tree aspect. And that is.
The character of the neighborhood, how it changes.
Those are the goals, but affordability is not part of the goals.
No, no, I can't say, I mean, I can't, no.
I think it's the scale and the size of the house.
The scale.
The scale.
Yeah.
The visible bulk.
Yeah. Yeah.
What is what is an appropriate bulk?
And the demolition of the site.
So that kind of poll goes back to your point, doesn't it, that if they're talking about the scale and the size of the box? You know, what's the difference if if Paul's basement is not finished and mine is partially finished?
Oh, we we we've we for the most part, we've just, well, we've basically, a lot of us have basically come to conclusion, we don't care what's being done inside. We don't care what's finished. Third floor, basement finished, we don't care.
You still have the bulk of the house in the context of the neighborhood.
It's the bulk of the house that's going on and and and.
So the definition would be the basement.
If it if it if it does or.
If it does, it's going to, the FAR will be adjusted.
Yeah, if it does or doesn't.
I think I think people are concerned with the with the with the visual bulk of it and not what actually happens in the space itself.
Yeah, it's it's a visual bulk.
And so if the basement is completely below grade and then it, but if it's if it's if it's exposed, then that's a different situation.
Yeah, we'll we'll look at the height, the height of the eve, the design of the eve, the height of the ridge.
I think.
See, some some of the modern houses have a much or need a completely flat or a much flatter, lower pitch. And so of those, and so if we have a thirty five foot height and those houses are thirty five feet, that could put the that could put the the ridge. And that could put the eve close to thirty five feet. And so we have to take into consideration. The height constraints as far as how it's affecting how some of these modern houses fit in if they're if they're pushing the envelope as far as the height goes. Because some of the some of these modern houses, they could have a twelve foot first floor and nine foot second floor. And then they have maybe a little bit of slope, a slope coming up and pride movement. All of a sudden, you have a you have an eve which is twenty five to twenty six feet high. That doesn't, that may or may not fit in.
So you're looking at proportion, different styles as well.
Yeah, we're looking, definitely looking at different size proportionality and how and how it fits in.
It'll be interesting to see how it proceeds. I mean, I wasn't able to watch last night, but I'm going to I'm going to watch it because I think there's a lot going on and I think there's a lot of really good information.
I think the materials, I think I would take that as a first meeting where helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it kind of gives you an inventory of what's happening and then it lets you kind of look at how the FAR works when you start to add in those different variables.
And a lot and a lot of these houses, a lot of the houses that were built, they were in the thirty two feet high, maybe a couple of thirty four feet high. And so again, we're looking at the height of the the height which is being built as well. Are they pushing that? These lot, nine out of the eleven were right at the threshold of the FAR, but none of them were hitting, I don't think any of them hit the thirty five feet. So does that means, does that mean something? What does it mean to us?
Right.
So again, we're still gathering information. These were, we're trying to make this as factually based as possible. But still, when all is said and done, you're looking at a house and does it fit in?
Right.
And how are we judging how it fits in?
So when's the next meeting and then?
First Monday of the month.
Okay, of every month?
Seven o'clock.
Until.
Select board meeting.
Until October?
Uh, and at some point, we'll at some point, we're going to have maybe a couple of week, a couple of month. Then at some point, we're no, we're going to be, we'd be handing this off. If we're going to an October town meeting, we're handing this off to the planning board well before, well before.
In August?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, well before October.
Okay.
It would be, I mean, that gets us into like the old funny summer here.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Well, it's going to be time, we just put it this way, because the decision making is not really easy. Heck, yeah, because it's a lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
I heard Artie mention the word trees. Did I see something in the materials about somewhere there was a line there about the town putting together another tree?
Tree bylaw?
Well, the select board was supposed to be, the select board was supposed to be putting that together. I think they've they've been a little consumed with some other work going on recently. But they've, most of the people haven't selected for the, you know, already. Um, I think.
Is there going to be a planning board representative on that committee?
Artie is on that.
Artie's on.
I'm the representative. I'm the representative of that. Oscar volunteered to be the representative of the large house review committee. Um, Nick Legris, Legris is is the representative from the FinCom.
And what is, so we don't know when it's starting.
Justin's representative from the.
Justin, you're the representative?
The water, the the flood management.
I'm not on that, Lee.
No, no, the other, sorry, sorry. I'm trying to make.
He's just pointing, sorry, sorry, I meant Josh. I meant Josh Love. Got it, got it, Josh, yes, yes.
Josh Love. No, he's not a representative. Yeah, yeah, he's right. That's right, from the select board, from the government for that. So but it's not, I looked at something online and it wasn't and it wasn't full. There's still some spots missing. So I don't I don't know when the first meeting is going to be. I don't know.
Well, thank you for the updates. I think super helpful.
There is one other update I I just to keep you from occupying. It's the Envision thing.
The Envision thing, sadly, that's right.
Yeah, so that's actually, so it's Thursday and Saturday. So the next steps on on the Envision Needham Center project, um, in which there's a consultant that has been engaged along with. The DPW as well as committee members to, um, they're going to do an open house event at Town Hall. Um, in which um they will present some of the possibilities and some of the um. Some of the concepts that could happen. Obviously, this isn't conceptual. Then then they were going to have a walk, basically a group walk.
So.
That we will both Thursday and Saturday, but I'll get to it. So the group walk is going to go through, members of the public have been invited. It's been sent to, it's been in the Observer, it's been on on Facebook, it's been on the Town Sub website. Uh, in which, so it's Thursday, February sixth from five to six P M. Saturday, there's two tours, um, February eighth, eleven to twelve and one to two and three to four. So there's three of them on Saturday. Then there's also, it it comes at um, uh, in the select board chambers, I believe, is where they're going to have like um posters and and set up.
What's that?
Yeah, so this is the people can see. But the point of the walking tour is actually there are like fourteen points throughout throughout Needham and a pre. Pre-designed little flow in which, um, at the various stops, there'll be someone saying, okay, well, what do we think about? Safety from this perspective? Or what do we think about lighting from this perspective? What is your experience when you walk through town at this point, at this point, at this point, at various points? And then the point of that is to take all that data, bring that together to build some concept plans and then even maybe some mockups. That will that will be piloting for a number of months in which if we reduce a lane or if we move, you know, move something, we'll put some more barriers up to kind of. Change some flow, we'll be doing that and evaluating that and seeing if that's something that is that people people are okay about and does it actually change, does it reduce, does it make it more bike friendly? Does it do, you know, the things that we have the intended effects of these? And then then there's chapter ninety funds and other things, design and all of that. If if everything is good, then we'll we'll go forward and and kind of pilot that and then come into a design and build.
Yeah, that'd be that'd be interesting. Not just not just a model, an actual, go onto the roads and actually change the road.
Yes.
And see what.
Whether it's with paint or barriers or whatever.
Temporarily change it, what's it doing?
That's great.
So there's that. And then there's also, if you can't make any of those, there's going to be QR codes at every one of the stops so you can kind of go on your own. And then you you can just take a QR code and do your questionnaire based on where you are. Can you give your experience about where?
That's great.
Yeah.
That's really clever.
Yeah, thank you for letting us.
No, and that's what they they were bringing that up, that maybe, you know, that's why they have four of these. Now they're Saturday, um, you know, but yeah, it is a. We did want to do it at various times because there's various, it's darker um at five o'clock, so that is a whole different, whole different kind of experience, um, you know, at night without light. So but yes, you're completely right about the.
What buildings are they looking at?
It's not the, oh, so it's like the crosswalks, the intersections.
Oh, okay.
So it's it's the it's the.
It's the street flow.
It's the street flow, yeah.
And do you feel safe crossing this intersection? Do you feel enough light is here? Do you feel enough, you know, you know, what what is your experience from both a safety as well as a design perspective? Do you like the flow? Do you like the fact that there's a a a no turn on red prohibition here? Do you think that would decrease the, you know, or what do you think about traffic flow from this area? These questions are all going to be entered into the data set that's going to be used to determine, you know, what kind of things that want a demo, experience kind of in a pilot and then. Going forward, if you have the money to do it, then.
So what are the parameters, you know, the the outside parameters of the streets that we're talking about?
So Pickering, so it's going to be Great Plains from Pickering down to, the scope of the project goes to Linden, although the walkway was never extended because it goes way far, but that they.
So it's Pickering to Linden along Great Plain?
Yep, and then um and then to to, it doesn't go all the way down to um, uh, it basically is that area of the road up to Town Hall and then it's it's the.
So so it's basically Great Plain Avenue?
Yeah.
Correct.
We're we're not looking at any of the other, we're not looking at Chapel Street, we're not looking at Island Avenue, we're not looking at Dedham Avenue.
This was initially, remember, as you remember, it was a multi-phase project. They did phase one, then they were going to do phase two and then pandemic happened. So now that there's. Okay, we'll retake a look at everything because that was based on flow, group play. But now there are there are different priorities. People have walked more people, you know. So they said, well, why don't we redo and start from scratch again? Um, because most of phase one's construction was all underground. And so most of the money that was used for phase one wouldn't, it's not like it's a complete do-over from a design perspective. There's going to be a little bit of, we have to redo some things. But most of the bulk of the work was the transformer vaults and all of the things underneath. So we're nearly not going over from scratch. We're just kind of pulling back a little bit and seeing where we can go.
And I think that what the purpose of this was is to make it kind of give a more of a town feel, I don't want to say town village feel, but really a more. Welcoming feel to pedestrians within the town and.
From a pedestrian.
From a little village type standpoint or something like that.
Yeah, and the the actual, like, because right now it's known as Victorian. I was wondering, the design that was picked, that's why you have those like gas lanterns and, you know, the 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 Victorian traffic lights. Um, just like they happened in England. So but there are different, there are different types of designs and all of that is welcome. That's going to be, you know, that it's kind of like an open, open palette. For possibilities, but yes, it is, where can we, do we reduce from? Three, four lanes to two lanes or three lanes or whatever it is? Do we, you know, do we, you know, remove parking at one side of the street and, you know, is it is it protected bike lane or not? But know that if, and the conversations with the consultants will be, there is a certain amount of to the right of way. So if you want something, you're going to have to take something else out. And they're not everything fits. It's like with those puzzles that you try to fit, if you if you take out sixty percent here, that's forty, you know. So that a lot of that is going to be kind of explained to the public and, you know, and hopefully it'll be a good engaging event.
That's great. Well, thank you so much. That's really super helpful. We never have time to talk about all these things.
I know.
Um, so I just want to say that there was correspondence that we received also.
Just wanted to say one more thing, just to go back to, I just I just want to bring to your attention that I got an email today from um Mike Moskowitz, who is the owner of the Needway, of Needham Gateway. Which is that plaza where Panera Bread is located. Um, and he let me know that the the compactor that they use at that site is not working, that electrical connection that goes under the parking lot, I guess, to access it. Is needs to be repaired. And so he wants to um put a temporary dumpster on the site over by the where the corralled area is. So I reached out to health, um, and I think they're okay with it on a temporary basis. And I reached out to police, I mean, not to police, but the building commissioner. Um, and he is okay with it for maybe a thirty or sixty day timeline maximum, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. Because you know, that is a tight parking lot. We've had had complaints from the neighborhoods in the past when there's been rodent problems. And so I just wanted to make you aware of what was happening.
I had a couple of questions when I read this.
Sure.
Are there current rodent problems?
I don't think that there are any current rodent problems.
And um, and Panera would not be using that for any foodstuffs?
I don't know that.
Because I think that's an issue for the neighbors.
They would be using whatever.
The dumpster. Those temporary dumpsters.
Right, for the food.
Yeah, because I, when I read this.
Go ahead.
If I read this, I think it said they're really only using it for cardboard refuse, not for food stuff. So if you're thinking that it's possible that Panera is going to use it in a different way, because she also talks about Panera. And, you know, having the trash on the opposite side of the parking lot and dragging the food around.
I think I think the food is going to go over to that side.
And then, you know, having suggesting instead as a temporary measure to use one of those dumpsters on wheels that's easy for staff to use. So incentivize their neighborly, um, what's a way to put it? Um. You know, to, uh, it just might be cleaner.
You mean have the staff move the dumpster around the parking lot?
If you have a dumpster that you can wheel and it's easy, you go get the dumpster, you bring it over to Panera Bread. You take all the foodstuffs, at the end of the day, you put it back in the dumpster and you wheel it back. That's just a lot easier to maneuver as opposed to dragging bags all the way over the parking lot. Because sometimes they'll break and that's probably what's caused the rodent problems. And uh, and then you've got exposed foodstuffs, you know, in the dumpsters. And I just want to, you know, to prevent that.
You just want to prevent any food from spilling out. So I think as long as the Board of Health feels comfortable with.
With the with the with the solution.
With the solution. That's what, quite well taken, Adam.
And then also, I also, you know, it's February, it's, you know, it's freezing. There may be certain limitations on what they can dig up when. So you should check with, uh, you know, with Mike to know if this really is going to be, you know, a sixty day thing or if it's going to be a ninety day thing. I'm sure it's less than ninety and hopefully it's less than sixty, but I just don't know what they can dig up and it's a lot to pump that for months.
This, I don't think there'll be a big problem with digging in the winter conditions. I mean, if the snow's going black, massive snow, things like that. But no, we we dig in winter conditions. We dig, we dig trenches all the time in winter conditions. But, no, we, we dig in winter conditions, we dig, we dig trenches all the time in winter conditions. I understand what you're saying though. But this is a, this is not a, it's not, it's not a big trench, it's not a big, big.
So I'll let, I'll let the Health Department and the Building Inspector.
No, okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure you're, you're aware of the issue.
Do we need to make it into our special program?
I don't think so, this is an emergency situation.
So the last item here I have is correspondence. So I just wanted to say the correspondence that we received.